Good evening, everyone, to our Village Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, January 2, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. Can everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one page under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whoever, please, remain standing for a moment of silence. A moment of silence for Lois Hagan, a person in the community for many years, who has been involved in many different groups, who care about our community. Thank you very much. I think we have a roll call vote now, please. Steve Albert?
Present.
Joe Corrigan?
Present.
Angela Hoag?
Present.
Clark Osborne?
Present.
And Mayor Curley, present. Upcoming meetings, we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, February 5, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. And we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, March 4, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Can I please have a motion for approval of the December 4, 2023 Board of Trustees reorganization meeting minutes, please?
I'll make that.
Motion made by trustee Osborne. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Can I have a motion for the approval of the December 4, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting minutes, please? Motion?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point, I want to do a reference to, Freddella won't be here today, so I'd like to, they are, the Firehouse Sub Public Safety Foundation grant application. Would the fire chief like to come up and explain it? Do you know what the grant you're putting in for?
I'm familiar with it.
Okay. The radio, okay?
So, Firehouse Subs is a franchise, a sandwich franchise, and they quarterly give out grants to volunteer fire departments, EMS corps, and I believe law enforcement agencies. So, this year, we are looking to apply for four multiband radios. The radios basically will allow us to operate on any frequency that's pretty much out there so we can communicate with Mawa, Orange County, Westchester County, in the event that we are called mutual aid to one of those places.
Right. And I think it has to be in by January 11th or something.
So, the, it's unique in that the application opens up on January 11th, and they take the first 600 applicants, and then they shut it off.
So, 10:00 a.m., so we want to be prepared to be right there.
So, it's gonna be like ordering concert tickets for Taylor Swift.
Right, okay. I think Taylor Swift's a little tougher than this one, but, okay. But can I please have a motion for the Firehouse Sub Public Safety Foundation grant application, please?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee.
I'll second that.
Second made by trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, chief. Did you want, do you have anything else while you're here?
I do. I was gonna give our yearly update for the fire department. This year, we responded to 358 calls for service, which is up about 60 from last year. The average turnout per incident for members was 19. Total turnout with all calls was 6,346 members, and a total of 3,656 man-hours for incidents. For total drills, we did 97 drills last year. Total man-hours, 3,565 hours, and total turnout was 1,634 members. With all the members, we completed 108 training courses throughout the year, and total training man-hours were 633 hours. And that's it.
Thank you very much, chief. We all, I can say this, I think from all parts, we appreciate your service. I know you go out many nights, many cold, many holidays, and we thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
All right, tell you, all your firefighters there also, thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chief Lachlan, please. Please, department.
Good evening, board members. In the month of December, the police department responded to 794 calls for service. That brought our yearly total of calls for service for the police department for 2023 to 10,431 calls. Just to provide a little perspective to the board, I went back over total calls for service for the last 10 years, and in 2013, which was 10 years ago, we fielded 6,645 calls for service. So, in 10 years, we've increased 3,786 calls for service, or a 57% increase in total calls, which is quite a bit. So, just briefly, from 2013 to 2018, our calls were fairly steady, averaging between 6,600 and 6,900 calls for service. We saw a big jump in 2018 to 6,800, from 6,898 calls to 8,612 calls in 2019. 2020 dipped a little bit because of COVID, I'm assuming because of COVID, but in 2021, we had another large jump to 9716. Last year, we handled 10,294, and again, like I said, this year is 10,431, so the guys are keeping fairly busy. I wanted to make the board aware of a piece of equipment that we recently acquired and were pretty excited about. We purchased a set of translation earbuds manufactured by a company called Timekettle. These earbuds are able to translate 40 languages and 93 different dialects, so, you know, Spanish, there's, you know, European Spanish is very different than South American Spanish. These earbuds can actually detect the dialects and, you know, change for that. So, as the boards are aware, we have an extremely diverse community here, and one of our biggest obstacles in the police department is communicating with non-English speakers in emergency and non-emergency situations. Recently, we just had a call where the victim of a crime, which was somewhat lengthy investigation, the detective involved spoke only Mandarin Chinese, and it was extremely difficult to, you know, have those people come in with a translator, some of these languages, it's tough to find translators.
I have a question, chief. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
So, this sounds like a wonderful technology that you can hear and it translates for you in real time.
Yep.
But how about the other direction?
So, I'm gonna explain it all. The way these earbuds work are, the officer places one in his ear, and the other party, the non-English speaking party, puts one in the other ear. And it's real-time conversation, so you can, I, you and I can have a conversation, you can be speaking at the same time I'm speaking, and I'm hearing your native language translated into English, and you're hearing everything I'm saying translated into your native language.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
It seems like it's gonna be an excellent tool. We're, like I said, we're gonna be deploying a set of them into the field to test out, to see how they work. Primarily, we're gonna be using them for Spanish, because that seems to be the one that we're running into the most. You know, we have a few Spanish-speaking officers, but when they're not working, sometimes it's difficult. So, if they work as well as we hope they work, we're gonna purchase some more pairs and, you know, have them out there so all the officers will have these capabilities.
I have a question to chief. Me and chief talked about this, so maybe next month, he's gonna bring them by, and we're gonna, we're gonna test them out.
Yep. We just received them, so I spoke to the mayor a little bit about it earlier today. I don't really have, there's an app, I don't really have everything set up and worked out yet, but for the next meeting, I'll bring them in, and we can kinda demo them if you wanna try them out.
Maybe get a 12-year-old to help you figure out how to use it. Do you have to?
A 12-year-old would've already had them out there working.
Do you have to, does it figure out the language automatically, or?
So, no. So, that's the one thing, is, is, out of the 40 languages, you don't need to pick the dialect, but you do need to pick the language.
I see.
So, that's, that's, you know, it's, I have a list of languages, it's pretty much every language that I can think of.
Yeah.
You know, Spanish, Russian, Ukrainian, Mandarin, Chinese, Arabic, what's that?
Gaelic.
Uh, I don't know if that's on the list, I'd have to check that one. I didn't see Pig Latin either.
You beat the system.
You know, Hebrew, Yiddish, Korean, Polish, I mean, pretty much every language I could think of is on this list.
Sounds like a great.
I believe they say that their software covers 93% of the languages that are spoken worldwide. So, again, hopefully, they work as well as we, we hope they're gonna work.
Fabulous.
Excellent idea.
Great addition.
That sounds fabulous.
And I can't take total credit for this, Kathy Mills actually brought these to my attention. We were, we were kinda talking about this one day, and I said, you know, it'd be kind of a great idea to, you know, for somebody to have these translation earbuds. And Kathy had said, I think they're using them in the school district, and kind of gave me some info on it, so I can't take the credit, it was Kathy's brainstorm, but, you know, hopefully, they work out. That's all I have for my update. I have one agenda item for the board's consideration. With regret, I ask that the board accept the resignation of part-time police officer David Eckert. Officer Eckert started with our department in 2022 after retiring from the Ramapo Police Department. He's indicated to me that he's resigning to concentrate on a business that he started. You know, he's gonna be missed, and we at the police department wish him well in his future endeavors.
Okay, yeah, David, he was a Ramapo police officer most of his career, came here part-time. He's actually a Suffolk resident, so he was a great plus to have, but he's doing so well in his private security business that he, he's gonna, you know, he just doesn't have the time, so we respect him, we thank him for the time he gave us, and it's great to have him still in the community. So, can I please have a motion accepting the resignation of David Eckert?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second him.
Second made by trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Chief, there's one thing.
Sure.
The Jeremy Coffer, the fire chief, he told me he'd been following the police around a lot, and he said over 5,000 of your calls were the Dunkin' Donuts. That's what he said. I don't wanna get involved, okay?
I'll talk to him offline about that.
That's between you and him. I know nothing about it, all right? I don't know why he told me that. Just letting you know what he said to me earlier today.
You never get a break, Jeremy.
Notice he didn't deny it. See?
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Years, you all.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you. So, a few things that we have coming up. On Thursday, the 19th of January, at the community center, we're going to have a first-time event. We're going to have the Suffolk High School Art Honor Society coming in, and we're gonna do an art event for kids from ages eight to 12, Suffolk Village residents. So, we put it out on the school backpack, we put it on the mayor's newsletter, we're getting the word out, so we're looking forward to it. For those of you that were at Suffolk Day, this is the group that did the face painting, very good group to work with. The teacher is fantastic, so we're looking forward to having this. So, if anybody's been to an art event where they make a picture, and then the instructor teaches you to make that same picture, that's what we're gonna do. So, they're gonna make a winter-themed, and we're looking forward to it. So, that'll be at 6:00 p.m. at the center, and it's RSVP, so we're waiting for people to reach out to us, and we're gonna sign people up, so we're looking forward to that event.
That group is always helpful to us. They always come down, do professional artwork, and it's a pleasure having them.
They do. Yeah, they're fantastic. The Dare Dance, Chief Lachlan, Friday, January 19, 7:00 p.m. at the community center for kids fifth and sixth grades in the school. And then on Valentine's Day, Wednesday, February 14, we have our Valentine's luncheon for seniors. This is Village of Suffolk seniors, and seniors that are in the Ramapo Club are invited to attend, and it's at 12:00 p.m. over at the community center.
That's a, that's a new event that I announced at our last, our last event, 'cause I was having such a good dance party with all the seniors, so.
Yes, you did.
We've never had this one before, so I told them that I was gonna do a Valentine Day dance, so in that, we allowing the Suffolk seniors, the Ramapo seniors, and all Suffolk seniors to come, and I think it's gonna be a great, fun time, and I think it's gonna be very, very busy, so.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
And we're using, and we're using local businesses in the area to provide the food. We're gonna use meatball, meatballs, we're gonna use ditties down there, then just, you know, so it helps everyone, helps the local businesses, and it helps the seniors to teach me some dance moves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
This time, I'd like to open up a public comment period, if anyone from the audience wants to make a comment, so can I please have a motion opening a public comment period?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee.
I'll second that.
Second made by trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. How we doing, sir? Could you just please identify yourself, where you live, and?
Stephen Monahan, Sixth Yorkshire Drive?
Oh, yes, Mr. Monahan.
Great. Thank you guys for having me tonight. I just wanted to, we'll let you know first, I've lived in Suffolk my entire life, but I wanted to speak of the last hearing that you had for number eight Yorkshire about the driveway widening issue. I'm glad that you guys denied that. I wasn't able to attend that meeting, I really wanted to, but my neighbor John had come, he had spoke for me. The landlord did correct that situation about a week later, very, very quickly, right? But it kinda works, looks worse now than it did before, because all they did was remove the asphalt, put down, I don't know if it's like sand or gravel mixture, right? So, it's gonna harden up over the winter, never gonna grow grass there, and he's gonna have his driveway as wide as he wanted and be able to drive on it. So, anyway, I got pics if you want, I can send them to you, but if you drive by the next time there, just slow down a little bit, take a look, it is a disgusting mess.
You've sent me pictures before, but I didn't see pictures of this.
I've sent you, mayor, yes, yes.
Yeah, you didn't send me these ones.
Not this one, none at all.
Send me these ones, so I, so I can address it, okay?
I will, I will.
I mean, as far as him growing grass now, he's gonna have a tough time until the spring, obviously.
Totally understand, totally understand.
But any of those concerns, we have, we have, I have another with the building inspector and the code enforcer, I have them besides the guys at night, we have them going out every single day, they wrote up, I hear things from these trustees, there's different things, and we, we've been addressing, and we wrote up a lot this week, and we write up every day if we have to.
100% agree with you. Mike has been outstanding with me, that's coming up next in my part, but I, I just wanted to speak my piece a little bit.
No, we got it, I got it.
I am not, yeah, I know you guys are doing everything that you can.
I will drive by it myself.
Thanks, mayor, thanks.
And I'm sure these other trustees.
So, I did, I did watch the video of that meeting that night, right? I know there was a recommendation to expand the driveway toward the back of the house, past the garage, which they did when they removed the asphalt, right? Okay, I guess that was a good idea, but now, when I look out my family room window, or my dining room window, or I sit on my deck, I see vehicles, cars, like, in a backyard, you know? What's done is done, you know, it's, it's there, they did the right thing, they put the pavers like you asked them, but it's kinda weird seeing cars in a backyard. Okay, so, one of you had asked how many cars were parked there on a normal basis, you know?
If I may interrupt one second.
Yep.
That was in front of the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, not in front of this board, so none of us asked that question.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's a different board.
Totally apologize.
That's a board that works.
Someone did.
They have their specific job, they give the variance and different things, so, so we, I, I understand exactly what you're talking about, but it wasn't us.
No, okay, I apologize, yeah, yeah, okay. They asked how many cars were there on a usual basis. I seen up to seven. We left just now, there was four. The lawyer that was here that night for the zoning board of appeals said there were six adults and two children living in the house. About two weeks ago, a car came up with a mattress and a box bring on top of the roof and delivered a new mattress in there, so I'm supposing that two more people moved in there besides the six plus the two kids. But really, what I wanna talk about is just the overall unappealing condition of the house. It's literally falling apart. When you go by and look at the driveway, if you take a look at the garage and that side of the house, it's just filled with mold, really, really disgusting. There is paint peeling all along the side. The door that was on the side of the house that leads out from their kitchen to a little stairway was ripped off when they moved in, and you'll see rotting wood. I believe my neighbor at number 14 was the one that spoke about the mailbox and things like that, but I get to see that up close every single day, right? And I'm not asking you guys to do anything about it, I just wanted to come here and talk about it tonight a little bit. Mop bucket sitting out on that little stairway.
Sir, we can address these a certain way, we have property maintenance laws.
Yep, yep.
I promise you, I will send it by tomorrow. And we also, with things such as mold, I can also incorporate the board of health into this, okay?
That's awesome.
I'm not afraid to call, and we just had the board of health down here this week.
That's awesome.
For other issues, for heating issues with someone, for, for even an elderly person didn't have maybe enough, you know, we wanted to make sure she was okay, you might say.
Right.
So, we're not afraid of using these other things.
Thank you.
And I promise you tomorrow, I will have them up there. Now, I know that they've been up there.
Mike Stark has been outstanding to me, yeah.
And Randy, I guess, went up there?
Yes, he has, yes.
So, they know about this. There's certain things where, I have to see how bad the property maintenance is, number one, but, but the mold, I could probably go to the board of health, and the mold can get on them, and, and even if, even if it's the tenants, to protect the tenants.
Yep.
From the landlord himself.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, good. I'm not trying to interrupt, I just wanted you to know.
No, 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 I don't wanna, I only have four minutes, so.
No, you have too much.
Real quick, so.
I haven't exercised that yet. They, they put that law in effect because of me.
Thank you, thank you.
Em, rightly so.
Listen, I like my Heineken, right? But my wife's gonna come up after me to.
That's fine. I recognize it. I recognize the first time I recognize it.
They just throw their.
I said it was a pretty woman, I didn't know who she was.
They throw their beer bottles outside in the bushes like it's like a trash can out there, you know what I mean? And I've spoken to the owner, I'll get to that in a minute, but the other thing is, twice now, I've seen two of them, the tenants, urinate outside against a tree or right on kind of the side of my property, like they don't have a bathroom inside their house. It's kind of disgusting, it's like, like animals, you know? I got pictures of that, too. I got security camera now in my backyard. And I don't wanna see that, no, I know.
More information than I ever need to know.
He was facing that way. But I really, I put another security camera in my backyard because of what's been happening, you know what I mean? So, I got plenty of pics from my phone from those cameras that I can send if you want to. But again, I wanted to just say about Mike Stark, he's been extremely helpful to me. Anytime I've called him, he comes right over, he'll email, respond to me immediately. He gives them violations, he'll bring his, I don't know who his partner is, the one who speaks Spanish, because they claim that they can't speak English, so he, they have, he brings the partner over to, to do it. It's just been, it's just non-stop, you know what I mean, ever since the house was sold from the original owner, so.
Have you told him, Mike Stark, about the mold? Have you told him about those other things?
I did, I did. He said he talked to his painter, they can't power wash it right now because it's too cold, which I understand, he said he's gonna do it in the spring.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. I, I don't wanna know that they're.
Yeah.
So, they are on it, okay.
Yep, yep.
As far as the doing other things outside, I will discuss that with the, chief of police is here, I will discuss that with the chief of.
He gave my wife the card, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll discuss, okay. You got his card? Okay, good.
Yes, well, that's my next point, so thank you to the chief and his officers. We don't like calling, right? Because I know they got more important things to do.
Every issue's important, don't worry about it.
The.
We keep them, we'll keep them away from Dunkin' Donuts if you call them, they're going to the fire chief anyway, okay?
So, they've been awesome.
That's a joke, folks, that's a good joke.
The dispatcher says you have to call and, and get a report, so we have it on record so we can, you know, have more things, right? So, thank you, chief, for your officers coming out. The latest one was literally yesterday morning, which you'll hear from my wife, the party. And then just number seven across the street, that also went to renters, they, some new renters moved in about a year and a half ago, they've been really good before the previous ones, which were not good, right? Again, same thing at that house, if you drive by, you look at it, the garage and above the garage, all full of mold, and I look at that out my front window every single day, you know? These, 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 these people at number seven, the new renters, they're much better. They've been very good, except for the condition of the house. So, anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know, thank you for allowing me to speak, and then my wife's gonna give a little more information about the parties, but again, chief, thank you for sending your officers.
I had one question, actually.
Yes, sir.
So, the first house you were talking about, I think eight, you said?
Number eight.
Eight. So, was, you mentioned how many people were living there, and then you mentioned that there was a delivery of a mattress, so you think another person, whatever. Are these people, is it a family that lives there, or are these separate individual renters?
It's really hard for me to tell you that, I don't, I don't know. I don't know, I see people coming in and out.
I wonder if there's some.
All the time.
Okay, under the law, and Terry can, but I'll start it and I'll let Terry finish up, okay? Under the law, which, which everyone understands, we're a single-family neighborhood, okay? But because of group homes, there was a group home case, an appellate division case, and under that case, if, let's say you have a family there, and another family moves in with them, and they act and live as a family, they, you know, they eat something together, they pay their rent together, they count as one family, okay? And you can't, and under that thing, you can't do anything to them. If you find out that they have, they have a house, and they are taking this room and saying, okay, give me 650 for that room, 750 that room, you're not allowed to do it. Suffolk also has a rule to one border, too, you're allowed to have, you know, one border. You can't have these separate entrances, all these locked doors coming in, and all these other things, so there are things that, that are in play. The problem is, is that if they, the new rental registry law for, for the old ones went out, the rest are going out now, 'cause we had some, Terry knows some legal technicalities we wanted to cover ourselves on, because we didn't want litigation and lose before we started, you might say. So, every resident's gonna be getting a letter, and I'll, we'll personally deliver those letters to there, okay?
Thank you.
To those housed where, where we're concerned, okay? But it, it is, it is a situation, it's a different, a different lifestyle, but we, we have to, we have to enforce.
Yep.
And that's why I've been, I've been personally, I've actually taken personal control of it recently, where they let me know, and I'm assigning to go out to different addresses, huh? Because, and if we have to hire another code enforcer, as I was talking to the treasurer today, he said, we'll do what we have to do, you know, the daytime one, going out, and just, then hitting those people with violations. Now, once you hit them with a, a notice of violation, they then get so much time to cure, okay? Then after that, you can hit them with the actual violation, which puts them in the court, and then we know what happens, it's something called those nasty people called lawyers, not all of them, of course, and, and, and so unfortunately, it makes, it makes.
I understand.
Makes it a process, but I find that they, they do, they do in time, for the most part, most everyone, because we have resolution letters that go out, like, like you made complaints, then they went and fixed it.
Yeah.
Then we give them a resolution letter, but, but, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and we have to be, you know, we have to, Joe, I need you to tell me.
Okay.
I need other.
I don't want anyone kicked out, you know, all I want is the house to look, you know, presentable, let's just say, for the neighborhood.
No, we have, we have property maintenance laws, okay?
I know.
It may not, you know, it may not go, you, you might have a higher quality than someone else, but it doesn't mean they're being illegal, unfortunately.
Correct, yeah, I understand.
You just, listen, you're my wife, my, your wife might say Saturday morning, get up and paint that right now, okay? So, or another wife, might, she might go out to shopping.
So, yeah, yeah. But, but thank you guys for listening. So, the owner of that house who lives in Brooklyn.
Yes.
The first time I called, chief, the, the police for the party, he came over to my house with a gift, I forget what the gift was, I don't know.
Right, okay.
It was what? Chocolate, okay.
Was it McDonald's? If he had any brains, he, he would've brought some McDonald's over.
Right, right, right.
It's a great corporation, they sell great product.
He gave me these chocolates, and he said, please don't call the police, here's my number, when you have a problem, call me directly, and I'll take care of it for you. But, yep, yep, I said, thank you very much, but no, so, anyway, thank you guys very much.
You're not bothering this board, you're not bothering the police department, you're not bothering the fire department, you're bothering nobody, okay? If you, you know, it's okay that we want you to bother us, all right? And we, we will, we will, I'll, I'll drive by myself.
Great.
I'll go with the code enforcer and building inspector myself tomorrow, okay?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teresa Monahan, Sixth Yorkshire Drive.
Very good, Teresa. Been living here since I was in the fifth grade, so, pretty much my whole life. So, I guess I have a little bit of a different perspective than the husband does. So, first of all, I just care that I don't have to have my daughter look outside her bedroom window and see somebody urinating in front of it. I would prefer to have them be respectful of our property and, you know, their property as well, because, you know, obviously, the value of our homes are all about, you know, how they're kept. I can't prove that there are more people than however many Stephen mentioned, but I would guess that there are, because there are a lot of people staying in and out, and as you said, they could all be family, I don't know, you know? But when I have to see fistfights out my bedroom window, when I have to get woken up at 5:00 a.m. because they're outside either arguing or fighting, or a little bit of both, that's a problem. And some of you on the board here will, or on the stage here will understand, I have a son who has a terminal illness. He has 24/7 nursing, 10 nurses on staff that sometimes come in and sometimes don't come in, and sometimes I'm up at 5:00 in the morning dealing with him, or 2:00 in the morning, or 1:00 in the morning, because he needs attention, and he needs help. And what I don't need are people sitting there at 5:00 a.m. when I went to bed at 2:00 a.m. and got up three times in between that time, to hear them fighting and arguing.
Doesn't have to talk.
What I don't need is for when my nurse accidentally puts a pizza box on top of her car, and it falls off of her car on the street in front of their house, and they go out and start threatening and yelling at her, and I happen to be walking out my door, and I had to intervene and tell them to stay away from my son's nurse and go into your house, she was already picking it up, and they were threatening and yelling at her. And that is not something that I wanna deal with in my community at all. So, as a, as a mother, as, since I've been here almost my whole life, I just want this to kinda stop. I don't think the owner of the facility of the house is doing anything. He's making his money, if he gets two more tenants in there, or whatever they are, he's making more money, and that's fine. I care about the condition of the house, but that's the least, you know, obviously, we wanna make our money back, we wanna retire someday, and we wanna, you know, have our house sell well, but I don't wanna deal with this on a daily basis anymore. And there are times when they've actually been so drunk at 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 in the morning that they were on our lawn. We wanna retire someday, and we wanna, you know, have our house sell well. But I don't wanna deal with this on a daily basis anymore. And there are times when they've actually been so drunk at 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 in the morning, that they were on our lawn doing air punches because they couldn't even stand up, and falling backwards because they're so drunk, that this is what I'm seeing out my side window and my front window. There's no reason we should have to deal with this. But I don't know what else can be done, except to keep coming and communicating what we deal with.
Is the music allowed?
Oh, for the love of God, the music.
It's yesterday morning.
5:00 AM, that's what wakes us up usually, or the arguing. It's one of the two. And it's blasting. And their side door to their house, where they stand, we call the cops, listen, and I've said this, I was saying this earlier, they are fantastic. They come. One time, they came, and I can't remember when it was, they came, and I said, there's a big party, and they came, and they didn't hear it because they didn't get out of the car. And I literally saw them on a drive away, and I called back the dispatcher, go, no, 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 they have to go out of the car and come to the backyard, because it was really coming from the backyard. And I hear the cop coming through the side lot, you know, in between the two houses, he goes, oh, yeah, it's really late, loud. And then you hear him banging with his, whatever they call that, banging on the door, not with his hand, because that's not loud enough, banging on the door, and somebody comes, and he's like, the guy must've said something, he goes, it's really loud, of course it's a problem. That's what the officer said to the guy. They don't even get it. But again, this is not what we should be having to deal with, or anybody.
So that party was yesterday morning.
No, this was another party earlier.
And then Christmas morning, with the other party all night long, Christmas Eve and Christmas morning.
All night.
Okay. Chief, can you come up for a second, please? Andy, come with the microphone, please, sir.
Mayor, every time we call, there isn't anything.
No, no, I got, I got, I trust, I trusted this chief 100%. He does his job. Can we, can you put out a memo, please drive by, let's stay on this house extra, okay? When, as you know, like ComStat in New York City did, when they see, when they see an area that's in, we hit it heavy. I'm asking you, and this board is, and you've always listened to everything we've done, respectfully, I know you will, can you please pay extra, extra attention to this house?
Absolutely.
For their safety and security, which is important to us. And I don't usually do this, I'm gonna be calling Brooklyn myself. I'm gonna get this guy's name, and I'm gonna call him up myself, all right? I asked the lawyer if I'm allowed to, he said I'm allowed to. And I will explain, I will explain how I see America, and how it should be fair to us and fair to your neighbors, okay? I will, I will, I will, we will be holding those people who do bad things accountable, okay? So, and I, and I will, again, we follow all laws of this country, but I will, I will, I will, like, when you had given me other issues, they were addressed, then I actually had communicated with you, you know, in emails and stuff. But if there's more things now that I don't know about, you know, I will, I promise you, I promise you, we'll be on it. I will find out about the mold, if we're allowed to wait or not on that, if we can at least even alert the board of health, so the board of health, besides has given violations, we give a violations, too. Like recently, Suffolk always used to just tell the board of health when heat was out, but I said, no. So we do it, too, now, right? You know, no one has a right to live without heat, because someone doesn't wanna fix their heat, you know? It can happen for a couple hours, even a day, but not for days or weeks.
And there are times that the chief's team has sent out two people, two cars, like, they do, they do come, they do remediate what they see, but again.
Well, we'll get on it, and we're gonna do our best, the best we can. If I have to, chief will move in with you.
We'll look at it.
All right, Stephen.
Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you, Theresa, thank you. We're here to help, and we're gonna do it. I will get results, I will get results, I promise you, all right? Because the chief will, because his wife, maybe his wife wants to move out for a little while, so maybe.
She's not moving.
All right, thank you very much.
Imagine the kids' car that ran into my tree in our backyard, the lights flashing for two days, and they never thought they should move or get out.
Right, right, okay.
You know, this is the stuff.
All right, okay, thank you, Theresa, thank you very much.
Thank you, Theresa.
And I hope McDonald's has a banner year. If I may say, they're executive of McDonald's, they do great, I love McDonald's. My favorite is, my favorite is McFlurry's right now, Big Macs and McFlurry's for me. That's my favorite.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I think it's me, or it's Mike's comedy office.
Well, no, it's only comedy, but the reality of the seriousness of their issue. The seriousness of their issue is my main, my main thing, and I will.
It's terrible what they're living with.
This whole board will be on it, and I'm gonna make Clark change his walking path, so he walks by your house, so he gives me reports on it.
I see them enough. Goodness.
Well, before I go into my thing, I don't wanna rat on, on the fire chief, but he said you were right behind Andy at Dunkin' Donuts.
Right.
And Clark was there, too, I might as well throw him in. I'm asking about, and Terry's been called a lot more than nasty at times. I can guarantee you, right, Terry? I don't think he heard me.
I didn't either.
I said he's been called a lot worse than nasty at times.
Oh, oh, when I talk about lawyers, I said it, not him, not every lawyer.
My question is about Regeneron. Now, in the wind, I'm hearing that the county is gonna give them a pilot, and the town's gonna give them a pilot, and I know your feelings on it are the same as mine. We got stuck once, let's not get stuck again. So let me know what your, what your game plan is.
My game plan with Regeneron is, is that I was the last to hold out on Regeneron, because I wanted something extra for the village of Suffolk. So I, besides the county IDA, which would still do, which will participate, and I'll explain that in a second, I went ahead and held out, and I was the last holdout, and I had a special meeting with Terry Rice and Mr. Janito, where we got what they call a community benefit. So I got an extra $100,000 over the full taxation on the purchase price of the building. So we're getting full taxation on what the taxes will be, which will be twice as much as we got from Avon, and a little bit more, because then we're gonna be getting money from the nail enamel factory also. So I got us a community benefit that nobody's got, Regeneron's never given out before. I also got parking for the seniors. In case there's no parking for the seniors, because that other piece of property was sold, I got a commitment from Regeneron to give us parking there, so the seniors can have their meeting on their property. Now, what Regeneron is, it's a specialty company, as you may know. They're going to spend another $40 to $50 million. I've seen these other reports, that's not what I was told. I was told originally approximately $50 million extra into that building alone, because there's a lot of specialty equipment.
We gotta revamp, revamp today.
Right. And more, because it's not because of putting new sheetrock up, because of specialty equipment, because of, you know, what they work on, what they store, and for safety reasons. So the only thing you're getting a pilot program on is not the value of the building, not the taxes on the building, but on improvements. So Suffolk will not only get, Suffolk will not only get that $400 community benefit that I negotiated out with them, because they thought I was gonna blow up the deal, which I was, and I just wanted a little bit better.
Whatever it takes, Mike, whatever it takes.
I need a little more money. We like zero tax increases in the village of Suffolk, we're gonna keep it up, okay? But also, so they'll get, they'll get a benefit only on the, any additions they did.
The cost of the improvements.
Exactly, that's all. But Suffolk will also get approximately, anywhere from $400,000 to $500,000 in building permits. So Suffolk, in the end, won't be held anything, okay? Plus, we got a great, great company of Regeneron here, okay? We got minimal 230 jobs, which they told me was about 125 to 175, but I'm sure then there'll be a big manager who makes, you know.
500,000.
Whatever the number, that's their business. And I'm sure then there'll be some other, other jobs there also, okay? Regeneron, wherever they go, they do community benefit days for the community. Regeneron was a, was a, was a good win for this village.
Absolutely.
And that's it. So I'm not giving any pilot program on the taxable amount on the property.
So they're gonna be taxed on the 38-point-whatever million.
Correct, whatever they spend. No, they don't know, listen, I don't know what they're, they're giving them a certain number, but, but I don't know what they're actually gonna spend, and what we'll make on building permits and whatnot. So they'll get, so we will get, we will at this point be taxed at full taxation, which we are this year.
Plus.
Now, we'll even go further. This board was, was, was smart enough to file a notice of issue against Avon.
Notice of claim.
Notice of claim, I'm sorry, a notice of claim, okay? We had to file one in 90 days with the toy. When I started telling people in this county about it, they thought I was a little crazy, but they probably thought I was crazy anyway, okay? Well, I want everyone to know that Suffolk got, we ended up had two other payments, one for about $178, and one for about $174, $180. So everyone else is giving a refund, Suffolk, because we filed it, we were gonna fight them to the end, we got to keep all of our money. So we got a pilot plus our taxes.
A win-win.
So we're gonna lose a dime, Jim.
It's a win-win.
It's a win-win, so.
Terry earned his money.
Well, I have to say, it was me that came up with it, but he was my lawyer behind me, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you for trying to steal my credit. I'm used to it.
No, 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 share it, don't hog it, share it.
I'm not hogging, just telling a fact, just telling a fact. Fact, thank you, Jim, always a pleasure. Whoa, 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 no leaving. Where do you go? You can't leave. Hey, guys, we got two gentlemen here from, we here from high school, guys? Suffolk High, they came here to watch the meeting, hope you learned a little about government, okay? And thank you for coming, all right? We appreciate that. Any more comments here? Be no more comments. I'd like to thank the DPW and everyone for doing a great job, and the police department and the fire department coming out in those calls during the snowstorm, okay? Remember, it's always right there. And like I said, we have to, first thing is do, we take care of community first, and that's what, that's what we will do, okay? At this point, can I have a motion to close the public comment period?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Alpert.
Second made by trustee Alpert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Good evening. Requesting authorization to accept the resignation of Mr. William Barrish, with an effective date of December 29th, 2023.
Okay, he took a job at the county, he thought there was more opportunity for him, so he made that choice. He had many years with us, but that's his choice, and we wish him the best of luck. Can I have a motion, please, accept the resignation of William Barrish, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by trustee Osborne, seconded by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Requesting authorization for payment application number 18 for Mill Electric Company for the Goshere Hardening of Water Treatment Plan Project in the amount of $25,092.13.
Can I have a motion confirming?
I'm at the motion.
Hold on, bud.
I don't know.
Does a motion authorize a payment to number 18 to Mill Electric, please? Motion made by trustee Osborne, second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Requesting authorization to hire.
Want you to do both, do both together.
Oh, the two hires?
Yes.
Okay. So requesting authorization to hire Michael Lonigan, Lonan?
Yes.
And Michael Sierra.
I have a motion.
As a, I'm sorry, as a street laborer for the street and refuse department.
I have a motion for appointing Michael Sierra, my appointment of Michael Sierra, my appointment of Michael Ockren as labor for the village of Suffolk.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, seconded by trustee Osborne, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Requesting authorization for mayor to sign a road restoration co-share agreement with Orange and Rockland Utilities in the amount of $144,984.
Okay. What this is, folks, is that when Orange and Rockland does work, they, we then make, we then come to agreement on the work that they may have done or not done, and they pay us for their portion of what will have to be paid. So this is an agreement that we came to them, and then we use this money, which costs a lot more than this, to pave roads, then, you know, hopefully, we can get, like, you know, we're hoping we can get Washington Avenue, if Orange and Rockland fixes that, and Park Place, and some other roads that really, that really need it. So sometimes you see roads bad, and say, jeez, why isn't somebody fixing this road? Because when Orange and Rockland does work, and digs things up, we have to wait a certain amount of time before we can actually go and put the pavement, or things could, you know, creep back into the ground. So when you see it not done, there are roads that I'm sure people drive on in this village that they want done, and we want them done also, but we have to wait until they settle, let's put it that way, until it actually settles. So can I get a motion, please, authorizing the mayor to sign a road restoration co- share agreement with Orange and Rockland?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Made by trustee Alpert, can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee.
Second made by trustee Ho, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles, very much.
Good evening, board. The first resolution we have from my department is to establish project 2024-006 lead service line inventory. Basically, the board of health has required the village to, by October 16th, I believe it is, 2024, to identify any lead service lines, water service lines to homes. So this project is going to involve seeking out, I think it's approximately 2,500 service lines of the village, both those that the village owns, and the lines going from the curb to the house, which is the homeowner's responsibility. And once that inventory is completed, we would then notify the board of health, and we'd be instructed on what action, if any, we have to take, and what action, if any, a homeowner would have to take to replace the lead line. The approximate cost at this time of that project is $700,000, and we have applied for a grant, which will provide a significant amount of funding if it is approved. We haven't heard yet whether or not the grant application was approved, and if we've been awarded a grant. In any event, it would be paid for by debt and/or grant money.
This is, this is something that's mandated by the board of health and the state, so it's something that we are required to do, okay? So can I have a motion, establish project 2024-006 lead service line inventory, please? Motion, please?
I'll second it, make it whatever.
Motion made by trustee Ho.
Yes, trustee Ho.
Seconded by trustee Osborne, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next resolution is my request to attend the New York State Government Finance Officers Association 2024 Annual Conference in Albany, New York, in April 2024.
Can I get a motion, authorizing treasurer to attend the New York State GFWA 2025 Annual Conference, please? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, second, please?
Second, trustee Alpert. Second trustee Albert.
Second made by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is to terminate participation in the New York State Local Retirement System Employee Contribution Stabilization Program. Let me explain what that is. Back in the years 2012, 2013, and 2014, the village took an opportunity to pay for some of its retirement costs that year and then amortize a portion of that cost over the next 10 years. The total amount that the village borrowed through the New York State Retirement System was approximately $854,000, and with interest over the 10-year period, we paid back almost, well, over a million dollars, which included the interest on the loans for that 10-year period. Prior to this year, once you were in that program, you were in it for life, which meant even though you didn't borrow any more money, you had to pay to the state retirement system an escrow fee. For us, it's about $25,000 to $35,000 a year. It's called a graded payment, and they would put that escrow fee on deposit on behalf of the village. And if at some time in the future you were given the opportunity to finance part of your retirement costs, they would reduce that amount of borrowing by the amount of escrow they held on deposit. This year, there was legislation that was adopted by the state that eliminated that need to continue paying that amount. We currently have over $65,000 on deposit with the state, and we have made our last payment this past December on it. So this resolution is where we have, we are selecting to opt out of the program, and the New York State Retirement System will take that escrow that they do have and apply it to future payments of retirement. Now, I have to say, our retirement bills are well over a million dollars a year, so it's probably not going to take too long to, to use up the $65,000. But nonetheless, it, it avoids us having to pay a graded payment against an amount that we may never again participate in.
Can I have a motion to terminate participation in MYSLRS Employee Contribution Stabilization Program? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, can I get a second, please?
Second trustee Ho.
Second made by trustee Ho, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next resolution is a bond resolution to the aforementioned Project 2024-006 Lead Service Line Inventory. As I mentioned, it is approximately a $700,000 project. We always bond for the full amount of the project because even if we do get a grant, it just reduces the amount we, we would borrow, and we wouldn't actually borrow the money until we needed it. So it's, this is authorizing us to, to do that. We'll need a roll call vote on this, mayor.
Right, and this is the one we also put in a grant for, so there may be a grant that comes through, is correct, Mike?
That is correct, and that would reduce the amount to be borrowed.
Can I get a motion for the bond resolution, Village of Suffolk?
I'm at the motion.
For the approval of the $700,000?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan.
I'll second it.
Second made by trustee Osborne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I got to do a roll call vote, I apologize.
Mr. Janito, I just have a quick question. If we were to be fortunate enough to get a grant, is this typically like 25% grant, 50%, like what kind of grant?
My understanding is a very high return grant, something like 70%.
Okay.
But I'd have to confirm that with Fred Rella, but that's where...
Okay, so, so substantial amount?
Substantial amount, yes.
Okay, great, wonderful news.
And I just need to do a roll call vote on this. Trustee Corrigan, please?
Yes.
Trustee Albert, please?
Yes.
Trustee Ho, please?
Yes.
Trustee Osborne, please?
Yes.
And Mayor Curly, yes.
The last resolution we have is, as you previously did, you appointed two people to laborer positions. One of those laborer positions is actually amendment of our current budget where we have a street maintenance automotive mechanic one position that would be reclassified as a street maintenance laborer position. So it doesn't change any money in the budget, but it does change our schedule of salaries and wages.
Very good. Okay, then I have a motion, amend the 2023-24 budget, schedule of salaries and wages, please? Motion, please?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Made by trustee Albert. A trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to do, I'm at, we're going to go on executive session, but I'm going to let the trustees go first if they have anything to say first, and then if I, I'll do my thing first, then we'll go into executive session. There won't be any votes on anything tonight when we do an executive session, but if the trustees have anything to say, feel free to say it now.
I just want to say thank you so much for DPW and the police for the first snowstorm that we've had in quite a while. So we all had to dust it off. I had to actually look for my snow shovel because I didn't know where it was, but, and that was some heavy, yucky, icky, icky snow. So thank you so much for everything that you do.
I just want to second Joe's sentiments to all of you. Everybody did the job. Excellent, as always. Mayor, I also want to thank you, mayor. I'm new to this board, obviously, my second meeting, but the Regeneron project and the Regeneron purchase is so big for this community, ma'am, and the work you put into, and you definitely kept suffering first. I want to thank you, because I've talked to a lot of people over the last two weeks. I have a walk-in, go to events, and different things I've been involved in, and that, whether it's sports related or just people on the street, everybody appreciates what you did. You kept suffering first. That was a huge, huge asset. This will be far better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, all right? Even Regeneron, the company itself, they actually have a day, one day a year where they actually go into the community and they help clean and work on the community. So it's, it's just a great, it's just, anyone I've talked to, Regeneron, if anyone knows any Regeneron, they, they just treat everyone very fairly, and it's a great, it's just a great thing to have, so.
I can't wait to work in the Village of Suffolk full-time.
I want to, second or third, third, I mean, what everyone said, that's a great, great job everyone did.
Anybody, any, say anything else? No, all good? Okay. I just want to do a motion, granting permit for the Suffolk Chamber, as a whole, Suffolk Street Fair downtown Suffolk on April 21st, 2024, and September 25th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 b.m., subject to signing an agreement after review of the village attorney. Motion, please?
I'm at that motion.
Motion made by trustee Osborne, can I get a second, please? Second made by trustee Ho, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I just want to note too, besides doing, what we working on, what roads? We're going to try to do, you know, pave some roads a little bit early this year if we can. I talked to Mr. Janito, he's great with the finances. We're going to try to, you know, get, get a paving a few months early, not wait so long, get close to the winter. Also, we're going to be working on, I'm going to be talking to different trustees and picking parks. We, we have some money from, money in lieu of recreation, and we're going to be spending that to improve our downtown parks.